If Clerk Segrist could call the roll. All right, Trustee Anthony.
Yes.
Trustee Foster is not here. Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good afternoon.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And last but not least Supervisor Williams.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda with one minor adjustment, and that is to add an item G1, which Clerk Segrist, could you please lead us in that motion?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda with modification of adding item G1, set date for appeal hearing, smoking establishment license denial, Chapter 18, Article 7, Section 18-507 through 18-604, Clouds Hookah at 44942 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan 48187, to appear just before a public hearing.
Second.
There is a most, item on, an action item on already, does that become G2? There's an M D N R or something?
No, that's what we're going to do is we're going to shoehorn that in before the public hearing, so right after this item.
Oh, that's a public hearing, I got you.
Yeah, after this item is, the agenda is adopted, we're going to go right into that item as G1.
Okay.
So, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That being said, let's roll right into item G1, which is set date for the appeal hearing, as recently stated by Clerk Segrist, and is the motion is...
Mr. Supervisor, I move to set the date for the appeal hearing for smoking establishment license denial for Clouds Hookah 44942 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan 48187, for April 17, 2018, at fi, sorry, at 5:30 PM.
Second. Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Very good, moving on now to our regularly scheduled program. First item is we have a public hearing to consider approval of the application for M D N R Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. We have Director Hornberger with us this evening, who's got a laryngitis or something going on with his voice. Are you going, do you have a representative, or are you going to lead us through this?
I can make it through.
Okay.
As long as I stay on the water, I'm okay.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may?
Yes, please.
May I make a motion to amend the ma, the motion that I just, the board just approved? The time of the hearing would not be at 5:30, it would be at 6:30, because that is a regular board meeting, correct?
Right, but we also had scheduled a...
So, we're good?
Yeah, we're good. I'd say leave it alone.
Thank you very much.
Because we have a closed session that evening as well.
Thank you, okay. Pardon me.
No problem. So, this is a public hearing, I think we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah, I am...
Do we need to do that first, or do you want me to give the background?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board open the public hearing for the, to consider approval of application for M D N R Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant at 5:04 PM.
Second. Okay, those in favor to go into the public hearing, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, basically what we're looking for, as a requirement of the grant through the D N R, we need to have a public hearing to give the public the opportunity to provide input on the trail extension, which would include two bridges. On the screen, you can see the red box is the location of the extension that would take the trail from the I-275 connection east to Hanan Road and connect with the city of Wayne. And then ideally, the city of Wayne would be able to continue the construction of the trail east from there. So then there would be two bridge crossings that would be necessitated by this. It's been slightly changed, the view there shows three, but it looks, we're going to need two bridges, so that's what we would be applying for the D N R grant.
Are there any board questions, comments? Please do.
So, the box is Wayne, I mean Westland, what's in the box, or this is all our...
No, that would be us, up to Hanan Road.
Okay, and you're saying...
To east of Hanan would be Wayne.
Oh, right. Why is there a box? I guess that's my question.
That's the new section of the trail.
And so where are the two bridges?
Do we have, are you able to hi, are you able to use your cursor to point to those?
I see one in the center of the box.
Nine and 10 will be the new bridge.
Bridges nine, 10?
Ten and 11.
Ten.
Oh, nine exists already?
Nine will not be put in.
Oh, we don't need it?
Won't be, right, it won't be necessary. We've kind of tweaked the...
Or you have to jump over the creek?
Yes, yes, no, we modified the layout a little bit from the original plan, so that we wouldn't need as many bridges, save a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Great, thank you.
So, the bridges, so you're just applying for them now? We don't know the cost or anything, like the estimated or...
We have, we had the ballpark cost, I believe they're about two, what is it, Bob, is it 200,000?
290,000.
290,000.
Are there matching grants for that, or because it's, you know, we're applying for, I mean, do we have any...
Yes, it's a matching grant.
Okay, that's a matching grant, okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right. And is Wayne, I mean, or Westland, do they have any plans to extend it, or you're saying proposed?
They, we've been in contact with them, and we have letters of support from them to, that they're excited about this, and someday when they have money, they would like to continue the trail, but at this point, they don't have the money.
Part of the reason we got this grant was Mayor Rowe was strongly in favor of and helped support us getting this grant from the city of Wayne.
But until then, it would stop then at Hanan, then basically?
Correct.
We'll just stop there, okay.
And then the plans are also that we'll be in the future coming back for a resolution to apply for another grant through SEMCOG to do trail crossings at all of the major roads, where you see the red tick marks on the graph there at Sheldon, Lilly, and so all those areas, so it would be like a hawk signal or some other type of traffic control to increase the safety along the roads, whatever SEMCOG would kind of deem as the appropriate crossing there.
Now, you also go across Michigan there though, too, because you can go, that connects the 275 corridor, right?
Correct, you go, I believe, you...
Along?
No, you don't go...
You don't cross? Oh, yeah, if you get on 275, that's 275.
Yeah, our trail doesn't, but it connects with the I-275 trail, which the I-275 trail does go across Michigan, yes.
We go underneath 275 there, eh?
Our trail does, yes.
Yeah, our trail goes under 275.
Correct.
So then the green line, where it crosses Michigan, that's not our trail, that's 275's trail.
Correct.
And we'd have to ask them to put a hawk, same kind of thing we're doing, put a hawk crossing there too, also.
Correct. I don't know that they would do, since it's so many lanes, I don't think a hawk would be appropriate, I don't know what the appropriate crossing would be there.
Yeah, we had talked many years ago, when the I-275 Metro Trail was being rehabilitated, the only real feasible alternative there is to construct a very large bridge.
Yeah, because it's like a crapshoot across those four lanes, and then another four lanes.
Right. Similar bridges under construction right now in Commerce Township, and the cost of that bridge is about 3 million, to put it in perspective. It's a big one.
Is Commerce Township paying for all of that, or...
Commerce, Weld Lake, Wicksum, Michigan Department of Transportation, and maybe West Bloomfield, but at least those first three communities, and then there's some federal money that's going into it.
Okay. In one of our planning magazines, we got community, so a community can raise money for grants, so like we could have like a, you know, raising, help build the bridge or whatever, and then you get matching grants from some of the federal agencies. Would something like that be feasible, or something like that? I'll show you that article, they sent it in last month's planning magazine.
Any other board questions, comments? I see no public. Call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Those in favor of closing hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have the first item in our study session this evening is...
We have two more.
Two more motions following, very good, thank you. All right, so...
Miss, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve submission of an application to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund towards the purchase and installation of two bridges along the Lower Rouge Trail between I-275 and Hanan Road, and to accept the funds if approved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following resolution in support of the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Whereas the Charter Township of Canton supports the submission of an application titled Lower Rouge Trail East Expansion to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund for development of a trail extension to the east from I-275 to Hanan Road, and whereas the proposed application is supported by the community's five-year approved Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and whereas Charter, the Charter Township of Canton has made a financial commitment to the project in the amount of $145,442.30 matching funds in cash, and now therefore be it resolved that Charter Township of Canton hereby authorizes submission of a natural resource, a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund application for $145,441, or 50% for bridges and installation along the Lower Rouge Trail, and further resolves to make available its financial obligation amount of $145,442.30, or 50% of a total $290,883.30 project cost during the 2018 and 2019 fiscal years.
Support. Thank you. Those in favor of the final motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to go into study session, first item, Canton-owned lands assessment. Director Bass?
So, one minor quick adjustment, Jeff had a, had a personal issue tonight, so he's not going to be with us. If there's any questions, we can always get back to the board with Jeff's input, but Greg and I are going to kind of take you through what we've done since the June study session where we last talked about township-owned properties, and, you know, in a nutshell, these are the, these are the things that we've tackled since that, that point in time. Back in, sorry, back in June, we covered these, these various topics. We talked about, you know, how and why the township acquires property. We reviewed the, I call it the blue map, the map that had all the different parcels that the township owns colored in, so the board could see where and what we owned. We reviewed some, or a policy that we have on purchases of property. Most of those purchases occur from the county under tax foreclosure. We talked about a few specific areas around the township where there was some interest in properties, either purchase or development, and then the last item was a discussion on the need for a strategy on surplus property. So, we've been working on all of this over the last eight or nine months now, and we wanted to share with you kind of where our progress is, and where we think we still need to head. So, we have, since that time, been refining the inventory of property. That's a database that we store in the G I S, we've been updating that information. We have also sold a parcel, that parcel was on Proctor Road, the board's aware of that. We have not acquired any new parcels since the, since the June study session. We've reviewed some pocket park locations, which Greg is going to talk about. We have developed some categories of land assets to talk to the board about, and identified some surplus properties. As far as the inventory work goes, so far, we have added purchase prices where that information was available, so that we have an easily retrievable record without having to go back through paper files to find out what we paid for, for parcels of property, and we've been working with staff in the Finance and Budget Department on that, on that task. We've added information on from whom, or from what entity the property was acquired, so that if there are any conditions associated with a future sale, we would know what those conditions could be. But the inventory as a whole is still a work in progress. It's a fairly large database, and I expect, you know, probably by mid to late 2018, we should be done with that final update of the database. We have sold that 2.44 acre of parcel on Proctor Road to Livonia Builders earlier this year, and as I mentioned, we have not acquired any, any property through forfeiture or through donation from developers or land trusts, which is another way that the township acquires property.
Fire department, land, but we did close on that, so we did indeed...
True. Okay, yeah.
That just last, this was last weekend, last week.
In fact, yeah.
So, one...
We did, we did acquire, what, a little over an acre of property on Warren Road?
Yes.
Sorry, I want to go back here. So, there are, this is what Jeff was going to cover, in terms of the land preservation tools that we have at our disposal, as developers come in to negotiate their development agreement, when it's not just a conventional, the project, the land is zoned this, I'm going to come in and build that, you know, exactly consistent with the zoning. We have the ability to negotiate some items with developers, with, especially with respect to land preservation, so if there are pockets of wetlands, pockets of mature forests that we think have value to the community to preserve, we can try to work with those developers to, to preserve those, those as open space on their, on their site. There is a 25% open space requirement currently in the ordinance, and we also have a tree replacement ordinance, which is part of the zoning ordinance, that is, you know, a fairly substantial deterrent to development of some of the vacant property in the community, and again, I'm talking about really non-township-owned property at this point. The cost to replace trees where otherwise development would be proposed today is pretty substantial under our ordinance, and that in itself kind of creates a preservation tool, if you will, by making it more costly than a traditional non-tree site to develop. So, that, that has been effective for the township, and it's in part, one of the reasons why some of the parcels that you see along I-275 through our community are still not developed. There's pretty mature forest on those properties, and the cost to replace the trees under our current ordinance would be very substantial. I guess I'll turn this over to Greg, and Greg can talk a little bit about some of the private parks.
Yeah, so one of the pieces that Tim and I looked at as we're evaluating all the properties was also the, the location of all the private parks. Most of the developments have existing private parks within those. Probably the best thing to do is just flip to the next page. We've got our map of existing parks. If you look probably behind you, it might be the easiest one. The green areas are existing township parks, and the orange areas are all of the existing private parks. So you can kind of see, the pink shaded area around the green is kind of the walkable area from a township park, but all the orange ones, you can see are private parks located within the different subdivisions. So that was a consideration that we wanted to take into account as we were looking at land that we owned that could or may be used for other park opportunities, and that's what we looked at with, on the next slide.
Can private parks be restricted access, or are they open to the public, or is it a mixture?
I believe those are open to the public, right? I don't...
It depends on, depends on the development.
The HOA, we have had groups approach us in the old neighborhood, oops. Pickwick Village is a perfect example, they've got a 12 acre park with a developed sand volleyball court, which is pretty slick, and there are a lot of times, people from outside the community don't live in Pickwick, will ask for permission or give them permission, at least they were in the old days. Hopefully, that's still going on today. And then there's Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, every now and then, they're looking for parcels to do events, and I've seen them in the new subdivision do that as well. So, not always, it's up to the local HOA to let others come in or not come in.
And ultimately, the master deed that gets recorded for the property would define whether that's a public space or a private space. And it, again, like Pat mentioned, it, it varies.
But the map does kind of give a good idea of how much park property there is, when also consider, when you consider the public parks that we have, as well as the private parks, there are a lot, most locations do have access. Obviously, the, the northeast side is probably the least accessible to a park. There is the Wayne County Holiday Nature Preserve up there, but that's why on the next slide, when we were looking at pocket park locations, you know, last fall, there was a land sale, and the board dedicated the funds to a future pocket park on the east side. So, a few months ago, the supervisor clerk, myself and Tim took a drive around, looking at some potential property locations for a park on the east side. We narrowed it down to three possibilities that would probably serve the east side the best. Trying, first was to try and get Wayne County to allow us to use a portion of the Holiday Nature Preserve and put in a, a pocket park, little playground area within that. Initially, they were very receptive to that when we had discussions, but once they looked at it a little bit further, they, there's some floodplain issues that kind of preclude that from being a good location for doing any development within there. We looked at a piece of property that we own, two, two parcels on Lots Road at Lotsford, as well as fire station number two, which could be another good location. Either of those locations would be solid locations for a future property.
That one is west of 275 though.
Correct, correct. So, Lots and Lotsford might be the, an ideal starting point for that sidewalk connections there, some neighborhoods that are underserved in the area, a lot of, a lot of walkable area to get to those two lots.
Do you know the acreage at Lots and Lotsford?
Do you know the acreage by chance?
Sorry, what's...
The acreage?
Acreage?
For the Lots and Lotsford.
Oh, maybe an acre and a half.
Can, can we go back to the map and look at each of these sites again, in terms of...
I don't have, it's PowerPoints, I don't have the ability to zoom in.
Okay, to blow it up, okay. Because if, if I look at the, the upper right-hand quadrant, where the, the Holiday Nature Preserve is, there is, you've got the, the original subdivision in Canton Township is the Holiday Park sub there, and there is, there's no park opportunities there whatsoever. If you come up on the Warren Avenue, where the fire department is, the fire station number two is going to be rebuilt, there's going to be a neat little green space there that'd be nice for a little passive park, you know, they've got a creek that runs back behind there, I think, and a couple acres of land there, once the buildings are taken out. But there's really not a subdivision neighborhood that's attached to it, so that kind of makes it out on an island by itself, and then that brings us back to Lots and Lotsford, which I got to get my bearings straight. Yeah, there's not much going on there either. Yeah, that's about the middle, east of 275. So, I, I don't want to give up on Holiday Park yet, I don't. And then I think Lots and Lotsford makes sense with the new development that's coming there, right, with the new apartment complex and other housing, it's coming all around that.
Right, if you, if you look at between Ford and Cherry Hill on that previous one, you can see where the blot, the, the bend in Lots is, if you, if you're heading north on Lots Road from Cherry Hill, you can see it kind of heads northeast, and then bends kind of straight north. It's right at that bend that we own the property, so about midway between Ford and Cherry Hill Road. And there is a connection going in there, I believe it's a spring, through C D B G Funds, where they're putting an ADA accessible connection in from that area to the I-275 Trail for those neighborhoods, so that Lots and Lotsford then theoretically could connect to the I-275 Trail, and then get you down into our entire trail system from there.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry, against I-275 there, or all the way to the east?
It's east of I-275.
Okay.
I wish I had a laser pointer.
Yeah.
To show you.
Can I ask a question for Tim? The, the overlay district in that area, or the, the development district that we put there, that, that is zoned for, for mixed use as well, so there could be more residential going in there, or no?
There could be, yeah, there could be, yes, yes. Mostly to the south.
To the south?
South of it, south of the actual central business district overlay.
Oh.
Which is where the, the majority of the undeveloped property exists, but for kind of the strip that fronts onto Ford Road.
Okay, the lower right-hand quadrant is pretty well represented, I think, with private parks. It looks like almost every neighborhood has, except for maybe as you get up to, what is that, Miles Drain, or I can't read it. The blue, the blue words there, just north of...
Wiles.
Miles Drain.
Wiles.
Wiles, okay, the Wiles Drain. Yeah, the, the residents to, just to the right of that, it doesn't, it looks like it's fairly dense, but no, no park there. What are the subs, Anne Marie or...
Yeah, the Oakvale, Oakvale, Stonegate, those are the subs there. And then what's yours, Michael? What's your sub name?
We're the orchards of Cherry Hill.
Orchards, Cherry Hill.
You, you come the other side of 275 then.
We're really far, we're over by the, we're, we buttress the I T C, which isn't really shown here, but there's the I T C Trail, which is...
Yeah.
A trail that connects Griffin, Floden, with the Lower Rouge, which is actually, we, Canton has a really kind of a pretty awesome trail network.
It shows as blank, but I would, that would be part of the trail that should be shown also, you're right.
But, uh...
It's a north-south trail.
We have, but we have, yeah, two private parks in our subdivision.
Yeah, there are a lot there.
Okay.
Do we know the average walking distance across Canton for residents to get to a park? Do we have like, is it five minutes, or is it like five blocks? Do we have an average across the township?
No, we don't, but I know it's, the, the goal of the National Parks and Rec Association is kind of pushing the 10-minute walk.
10-minute walk?
Which would be a half mile to a park, and I know we do not meet that currently.
Is there a way we can figure it out, at all?
Yes. Yeah, we just have not been able to do that to this point, but...
Time and money. You can do it all, time and money, do it.
Yeah, G I S.
G I S.
Is Warren across 275, is there a sidewalk there for people to walk or bike across if we were looking at the fire station one?
The, the bridge on Warren Road, when it was reconstructed a number of years ago, has a, has a pathway constructed on it already, so...
Okay.
It's a matter of building the connections both east of that towards Warren Road, and then, sorry, west of that towards Hagerty Road, and then east of that, kind of towards the Lots area.
Well, because the church is there, that we just approved that amphitheater, do they have sidewalks around their church?
They, do they?
No?
I don't believe so. The sidewalks start kind of down in front of, basically at the west end of American Yazaki's property, so there's a little bit of a gap there, that, again, it's on, on our gap program long-term.
Okay.
So, the, the last step, kind of in the, the work that we've done over the last seven, seven or eight months now, has been developing these land asset categories, and we broke them down for the purposes of discussion into three, three particular categories of properties. What we've deemed the sacred grounds, occupied properties, where there's an existing building facility, or a community park, or... facility, or a community park or golf course facility, and then surplus properties. And under surplus properties, those are further split into ones that we would recommend be held for now, and those that we could maybe potentially sell off as surplus. So, the first category are the sacred grounds. These are the cemeteries and anything historic of nature in the township. And I think should any one of us make a recommendation or decision to sell those properties, tornadoes will spawn up from the ground concurrent with lightning bolts from the sky. So, staff's, staff's recommendation would be to certainly keep the sacred ground-type properties off the table for the purchase, for, for the purpose of selling those, at least from a policy standpoint. The second category, probably the largest category of property that the township owns, are the occupied properties. And these would include anything like the, the site that we're sitting on today, where you've got existing building facilities, or as I mentioned, the, the parks and golf course facilities. You know, it's likely that these properties would not be considered surplus, at least not anytime soon, and, you know, as such, would not be earmarked for any kind of sale or disposal. The surplus then, as I mentioned, we broke those down into those to be held and those to be potentially sold off. Those to be held generally probably don't have a lot of value. They were acquired for relatively low cost, or at no cost, in many cases, from developers that donated the property to the township for some kind of a development. And I think of, you know, some of the property either side of Morton Taylor, north of Warren Road, heavily wooded wetland areas that really can't be developed and probably should not be developed, and should just, you know, continue to be preserved as, as, as green space. And those were contributions made to the township back in, in the day as part of the development agreements. And then there's many other properties that the county ultimately got under forfeiture, tried to sell the properties, no one bid on those sales after multiple attempts by Wayne County, and then they in turn, turned those over to us at no cost. Those are usually wetlands, woodlands, and properties that immediately abut creeks or drains. We've got a bunch of those, and again, our, our recommendation would be generally to probably, you know, just, just keep those for now. The, the ones to be sold off would include some properties that might have some value and could generate some income to the township to help offset capital costs for existing township-owned assets. I've put together a, a series of slides now that depict about a dozen properties that we've identified, that we think we have historically been trying to sell those, while not very aggressively. You know, there's some real estate agents on the market that are aware that we've got some property in a few locations that's for sale, should they have a client that would be interested. But we're suggesting to maybe take that to another step down the road here. So, the properties that, that we wanted to run through with you were, the first here at Michigan and Beck, this is the southwest corner of Michigan and Beck. If you're more familiar, this is Vinnie's Ham, oh, you can't see my pointer, but you've got Vinnie's Hamburgers, and then the bank right on the corner across the street from here. And we purchased this property under tax forfeiture a number of years ago, because we didn't have the full right-of-way along Beck Road. So, it was a relatively inexpensive, inexpensive purchase in order to make sure that we could get the right-of-way for the county, long-term, when the county ultimately does some kind of widening or road improvement on, on Beck Road there, so...
I, I see that parcel as an excellent economic development parcel. We've had restaurants come in and say, "We want to," and it's like, "No, thanks, keep moving." If we could put jobs there, something, you know, engineering, manufacturing, higher end, that's what I would be interested in.
What's to the west, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Real quick, you said it was a forfeiture, so could we just sell it for what we purchased it for, or would that be?
We, we could, yeah, and...
I mean, we couldn't make, make any more money than what we purchased the land for?
That's correct.
Okay.
If, if there's any surplus money in, in this particular case, the surplus money would be returned to the county land bank. That, that's the rules of buying under forfeiture, when you actually buy before the auction, which is the first right of refusal, refusal option that, that we get each year. This one definitely, I think, would have sold at auction if it went. It's prime real estate. I was very honestly surprised that it ended up on the market. And it's a pretty good-sized parcel, as you can see.
So, what, how, again, how I look at this is an economic development piece, an asset that for the right buyer, give them a heck of a deal, also get a little extra cash over and above what we picked it up for, and then let Warren Evans know when we do that. Say, "Warren, we're sending you a check for X, just because we could here, to help you out for, by the way, potholes here, road here, whatever." So, there's an opportunity here.
Value? Uh, no, we haven't, we haven't done that yet. You know, if we, you know, get a real estate person on board, we, we'd market that, you know, just ballparking it, land on, on Michigan Avenue, probably fifty to a hundred thousand an acre.
What is to the west of it there?
That's a closed manufacturing facility, very small facility.
So, potentially, someone could buy both parcels and open something bigger?
That's what we hope.
Okay, and I see the sidewalk is on either side of it, so that would be required if they developed it?
Correct. Yep, so those gaps would be completed.
Okay.
The gaps, and I, I forget the name right now, of that closed facility to the, to the west, but the gaps would be completed across both those parcels.
And, and that would include coming from the east, that corner there, that doesn't look like it has, we, we could finish that off, so you, okay, great.
The, the second site is a site where the former Division of Public Works facility was located. The building immediately to the, to the left on the screen that you see, this is on Geddes Road, just east, sorry, just west of Sheldon, that's the Western Wayne facility. So, right now, this is one contiguous site, including Western Wayne. We've talked with Western Wayne a number of times, they have no interest in, in expansion and no need for the additional property. This could conceivably be split into a couple parcels and be residential, or it would need to be rezoned into some form of commercial development. But we would continue to recommend that, that this site be a potential site to be sold.
Yeah, that's a tough corner there, too.
It is. We've been also kind of holding on to it, you know, depending on what might happen with an intersection improvement here, but this, this probably, this property is likely not going to be needed for any kind of road improvement, but it was kind of one thought at one time of keeping it. But Public Works is now, you know, entirely relocated down on Sheldon Road, so this is really kind of truly surplus. The next parcel is a series of parcels, which we did talk to the board about back in June of last year. This is some of the parcels. We just drew one big kind of, you know, polygon around this thing, identifying approximately where all the parcels are. And here, there's about twenty-five acres of property that, you know, could be subject to a development agreement between the developers of the property on the north side, that, that I think the board has heard from, at least on one occasion, regarding doing mixed-use development on the north side, together with some apartments. They have expressed some interest in acquiring some of this property to also do apartments, and that might be part of some kind of potential land, land swap or land transfer down the road.
I would call it definitely in play at this time.
That was the land swap for the, the trail?
Trailhead.
Head, yeah.
Exactly, and, you know, thinking to some of the concerns that were raised by the board back in June, there were concerns about, you know, not maybe selling off everything all the way over to Morton Taylor Road, so this road right here is the road next west of Morton Taylor. So, we're basically preserving the property, this is Willard, right, if I remember this right?
Willard, yep. Kareem Willard.
Yeah, so, so we would preserve that, we would preserve the property that's immediately east of here, so you would end up with a natural buffer between Morton Taylor, the wetlands preservation area for the landfill, and the ITC corridor. So, there's quite a bit of property between here and that point, but this is one that we would, you know, kind of actively consider selling, trading, whatever the opportunity might be that comes along with, with a developer. The next parcel, this is a parcel that we've kind of, or a group of parcels that we've kind of split up, and again, from input that we got from the Public Safety Director at that June session, there is, the township actually owns three parcels here, the two that are demarked in the, in the red, the red rectangles. And we also own the parcel immediately east of this, towards Lily Road. So, this is across from Singh Executive Park at Lily and Michigan Avenue. We have three parcels in there. The Public Safety Director had recommended that we retain the roughly eight-acre parcel on the corner, should the need occur in the future for a fire station four. So, our suggestion would be, you know, eight acres is plenty for a fire station. As we know, two or three is probably, you know, about the minimum, based on Fire Station Two and Three, that are the two remote sites in the township. So, there's plenty of room on, on the eight-acre site on the corner, but these two sites could potentially be sold down the road to generate some income. And again, on Michigan Avenue, this is, I don't know if it's absolutely premium, but it's pretty good property, definitely has some, some value. If marketed together with that strip in the middle that we don't own, it would have even more value.
Is that part of your sidewalk gap program also, going down Michigan?
Long-term, yeah, long-term. The, the idea is to have sidewalks all the way along Michigan Avenue, so people can get ultimately access to the trails. So, again, you know, usually with development, you can see on the north side of the road, where Singh put in their executive park, their sidewalks, so as the developers come in, they typically fill in those gaps for us. But it's not in any short-term strategy for filling those gaps by the township from, from our program due to the resources.
Due to what, sorry?
The resources, sorry. It'd be very costly.
One of you mentioned the ordinance with trees issue. Both this one and the last one have a lot of trees.
They do.
Will that, will we run into the same thing there?
It affects the price.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ultimately affects the price on what somebody's willing to pay, based on what the development costs are, and that's a formula that's unique to each project.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the next slide is the, the former Munn landfill. You can see, pretty well depicted on here, to the right of the, the screen is the Sock Trail Hills landfill, and then if you follow a line kind of parallel to the railroad tracks, which is that dark gray line that bisects the slide, you can see kind of like a gravel road that follows the tracks, and then goes up on a forty-five degree angle to the top left-hand part of the page, through the red square. And that is the haul road that the operators of the landfill are using to take clay to and from the storage site behind Public Works, which is really where that road currently ends, just to the up and left of the, the red box. That's where the clay's being stored. So, not that we would sell this today, but we would, you know, potentially market this for sale, once the landfill no longer needs to use it for a haul road. And that's based, that's what our agreement says with the landfill, so we would recommend that it be put on that list. And just so the board's aware, the landfill has the first right of refusal to purchase that property, under the terms of the agreement that we have with them. Not sure they would exercise that, but they do have the, the first right of refusal. The next site is Palmer at I-275. The building to the left of the, of the red polygon is the former ITT Tech School at Hagerty and Palmer. We own a, a good-sized parcel, about four and a half acres, immediately to the east of that. Our thinking for many years has been that that property could serve as open space as part of the development agreement for the property south of here. We don't envision that this property would ever really be developed, because it's challenged in many ways. It's got a heavy amount of tree cover, as you can see on it. It has wetlands on it, and the very west border between the red line and the parking lot for ITT is a detention pond, so there's just a number of encumbrances on this property that is going to make it difficult to develop, but it certainly would have some value for a developer that might be looking at it to develop property south of here as light industrial or other industrial institutional uses, where they would need to meet some open space requirements. So, our recommendation would be, we've had this one listed on and off again for many years, would be to continue to try to market this piece.
Is ITT vacant right now?
It is, yep. Pardon me, it's been closed for, I think, about two years now? The, the next is actually two parcels, the total four-point-two acres at Cherry Hill and I-275. These are some properties on the east side of I-275 that were purchased a number of years ago under forfeiture, in the event that a slip ramp or some kind of interchange was going to be needed at Cherry Hill Road. Pardon me, we will, we have, through a number of studies over the years, determined now that interchange is not feasible here, and there will never be any connections to the interstate highway at this location, so we would recommend that these parcels be also The next are a series of properties that, pardon me, the board has talked about before, and they're located west, sorry, east of Willard Road, which is the north-south road immediately to the west of these properties, and back up to the unimproved, kind of unopened Morton Taylor corridor. There, these kind of back on to the existing lots on Willard. Morton Taylor will not be extended in the future through this area. As you can see, our trail goes pretty much right up through the Morton Taylor right-of-way here, and we also have a large sanitary relief sewer that goes through this, this location. In fact, the red box at the bottom of the, the screen here is close to where the pipe actually, that sanitary sewer, relief sewer comes through, so we have to kind of take a look at that a little bit more carefully on whether those parcels are really available, but we had acquired a number of these parcels from the state years ago, and I believe maybe a few of these through foreclosure or forfeiture, but the ones at the south end, definitely we got those from the state. Bob had worked on that when we were designing the sanitary relief sewer, and there was a utility conflict that we needed to kind of get around, and by acquiring those parcels it, it helped us do that. So, staff's recommendation is to declare these two as, as surplus. They're not buildable lots, they're lots that individuals that perhaps live on Willard Road, a few of them have, over the years, expressed some interest in purchasing them in order to care for them. Should the board not desire, and this really is applicable to any of the properties that we're talking about tonight, if, if the board should not desire to declare these surplus, then I think what we have to do is have kind of a more serious conversation with, with Greg's team and, and planning over, how do we then care for these parcels? If they're going to be under the township's long-term ownership plan, then we need to be responsible for the quality of the, the trees that are on those properties. We need to be cognizant that, you know, things like dead and decaying trees are going to need to be removed, so that we don't have a liability associated with somebody getting injured from, from that, so...
Real quick, Tim, with those, if there are sewers underneath them, and the resident purchases, let's say we do allow them to purchase it, they can't build on it then, correct? There's no, no building where we would have concerns with something happening to the...
Right, so they cannot put a home on, on these structures, if, on these lots. You know, if they didn't want to put a garden, garden shed, you know, within the confined... You know, if they didn't want to put a garden, garden shed, you know, within the confines of the ordinance, they could perhaps look, put a small garden shed back there. The reality, in the case, if you, when I looked at most of these parcels, it's heavily wooded, pretty wet. Bob, I know he's, he's spent a fair bit of time out there, he could speak to exactly what it looks like. It's really, it's going to be probably just preserved property that comes off the public tax rule, where we're not receiving tax for it, and would go on to the private tax rule of those properties, and would generate a little bit of income. I doubt that these, these are very small, like I said here in the slide, point zero five acres each, they're, they probably don't have a tremendous amount of value, but to the residents that actually back up to these properties, I know that they have repeatedly expressed an interest to Kristin Thomas in Pat's office over the years of possibly purchasing some of these, so.
The ones in between, do the homeowners own them in general, or?
Well, yeah, somebody also owns them, and in many cases, it's the homeowner that lives on Willard.
And so Morton-Taylor is actually the untreated green space to the right of the red thing?
That's correct, yeah.
And that's the, the trail, the ITC trail, and I'm glad to see that it's wooded on either side of the trail, so you can't really see these lots from the trail itself. I mean, I've been on there, and you have those trees sort of as a buffer from these other trees, these lots, right?
Yeah, correct.
And does ITC own that part of the trail land, or do we, or?
It's road right-of-way.
Yeah.
It's road right-of-way.
You can see ITC's big Cherry Hill Station there on the right-hand side, that's that gray piece of, of property, the fenced-in electric station. And the trail is on their property just south of here, where it kind of goes off the slide and then goes into the Morton-Taylor right-of-way up there, and then turns left, which is west, back into the ITC corridor, a little bit north of here.
So does the county own the right-of-way, or do we?
Yes.
The county does. I'm just worried about, for any reason, the county coming in and knocking down the trees on the west side of the trail. So I, doesn't sound like that, that they'd have any interest in doing that.
No.
And then...
And north of here, just so you're aware, north of here, the wetlands are extensive, and it would be really prohibitive to ever imagine that Morton-Taylor north of here would be, would be extended, yeah.
And then lastly, on the lots, if we sold them, the homeowners could knock down all the trees if they wanted to, or?
They would have to comply with our tree ordinance.
They would, okay.
They would, yes.
That would be hard to do then, right?
Right.
Because like, if they take, like, the top, if they took down all those trees, I mean, they'd have to replace that many trees.
Order of them or something, you know, whatever the ordinance says, okay.
Again, my, my sense from what Kristin has told me, and what I've heard from at least one person here a number of years ago, was that they were looking to acquire them just to preserve it, and, you know, make their, make their laws.
Also, if, we could make, we could make a contingency on the sale that you can't do X, Y, Z, if we wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, theoretically, you could put a restriction on, on the deed, that it could, you know, be limited, limited use, limited development. Again, you put a condition like that on, and you're ratcheting your price down again, but, you know, if that's, that's the board's desire, we could certainly do that.
I've seen in my neighborhood with things like that, because we have a public park and ours, our homeowners, people start, their yards start to move into the trees, and, you know, nobody says anything.
Yeah, that's definitely what's already occurring here anyways, and I know that when Bob went through, Bob did a lot of the negotiations years ago, when we were trying to get the trail put up through the, the section south of here, from Cherry Hill South, all the way down to the Lower Rouge corridor. And there were many, I'd call them difficult discussions with the residents, over structures and that they had already placed in the ITC corridor, and use of the ITC corridor, when we had been granted an easement to put a sewer through, and we had to tell them to, they had to move their sheds, and they had to, you know, stop using ITC's property, so.
I, I imagine if the board does agree to sell these properties, we'd been, I remember last year, we had been approached by a gentleman who wanted to purchase one, I imagine we would give him the first kind of dibs on purchasing the property?
His concern was his neighbors adjacent to him were going to acquire the property behind him, that was his fear.
Right. So my fear now is if we say yes, we're gonna, we're gonna sell him, we make sure that he has the first right to, okay, yeah.
I agree with you, the right thing to do.
And then the, the last couple of properties that we have, this was a parcel at Sheldon and Sheldon Center. You can see the strip center and the Canton City Market. On the, on the opposite corner here, we had purchased what was called the White House. It was a White House owned by Dorothy White, that we purchased a number of years ago, so that when the Sheldon, Sheldon Center connector here was put through, there was actually adequate right-of-way to make that turn, make that bend. So as a condition of the construction contract through Wayne County, we let the contractor use the house in exchange for taking it down and restoring the site. So you can see the, the small point two-nine acre parcel sitting there vacant. Our recommendation would be that we try to market that to ideally maybe one of the, either the shopping center owner or the church immediately to the south. Cherry Hill Village.
Oh, I was just curious, that portion, so Sheldon's interesting, aren't there like legal non-conforming commercial buildings further to the south on Sheldon Road and, in that area, that is now currently zoned residential?
Yes.
So, and that parcel that we're talking about right there would be a, a commercially-zoned property?
I'd have to look at the zoning to tell you, to be honest. Yeah, I haven't looked at the zoning map there in so long.
Yeah, because it's just, it's interesting. That, that, that portion of Sheldon Road is interesting, in that like, you can tell for years, it was kind of, you know, a series of businesses that kind of sprung up on residential properties, and they're still in operation today, so.
Probably many of them were very long, had been there for a long time. Also, the, we had approached the shopping center owner here a number of years back, but that was before the shopping center was revitalized, and they were struggling at the time, so they really didn't have an interest in acquiring any more assets to take care of. That answer might be different today if they were approached again. Cherry Hill Village, a couple of properties here, these are the last ones that we're recommending. The property to the right-hand side, these are the properties in and around the Fountain Square, across from the Cherry Hill School, and right by Cold Stone Creamery there. The property to the south includes a little piece of that parking lot, and then that little small amount of green space there. It's a challenged site to try to develop, but the original conceptual design for Cherry Hill Village was to have buildings on that location. You know, it's, we've had one individual take a look at it.
We sold it, and we took, we allowed them to get out of the deal once they realized the expense to, to build, so.
Utilities that need to be relocated, pardon me, that are pretty costly.
Wasn't that the dog groomer?
Yeah, yeah, Pooch.
Yeah, it was Poochy Parlour.
Poochy Parlour, thank you.
And then the larger parcel to the west of that, or to the left of it, is the parcel that we acquired from Grand Saquaw as part of the consent judgment, or one of the parcels that we acquired from Grand Saquaw. As you can see, a good amount of it has some existing parking on it, which is designated as kind of shared-use parking, under the Cherry Hill Village District overlay, so it would remain so. But there is some developable property up around the Fountain Square there on Constitution, that again, could have a commercial building, or potentially be joined with the property immediately to the west, the old garage, and be developed as a, as a commercial.
And the owners, the new owners there have expressed interest and have, have asked for numbers, so.
So these are kind of the, the series of properties that we've kind of gone through, between Kristin Thomas, myself, Jeff, and a couple other staff, looked at some, some property as potential ones that, that we might want to market.
Now, there had been some talk, so I know for years, we were looking for a place for a parking lot in Cherry Hill Village. Has there ever been discussion about putting parking spaces on that existing property that we own?
Yes, yep, that was one of the alternative locations that, that we, that we looked at at the time.
And how many, you know, what kind of capacity that property had for additional parking spaces?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of just going off the top of my head, but it was, you know, in the neighborhood of, you know, forty to sixty parking spots that, that we could fit in on the, on the green space. So it really kind of comes down to a question, you know, is that good value? Is it better value to sell it and have it developed, you know?
If you go back to the picture where the pampered Pooch, or Poochy Parlour wanted to go, I looked at that after the fact and said, why would we want to get rid of that green space, that little buffer, ever, if we didn't have to? Because you've got poles in there, and it just, it didn't make sense to me that we even sold it to her originally, after I stared at it harder.
Yeah, and that, that may end up being the case, it's, you know, difficult, be a difficult site to develop, but.
Do you know how many parking spots there are right now, in both of those sites? A ballpark figure?
You mean on?
Right now, it looks like there's a pretty...
Existing.
Yeah, there's probably fifty, probably fifty spots between the two sides.
With that in mind, are you saying that if we sold it, those spots would stay or be developed?
They would stay.
They would stay.
Yeah, so we would make a condition of sale that they conform to the Cherry Hill Village overlay requirements, which means all this parking is kind of shared. That was the concept with Cherry Hill Village from the beginning.
Right.
Somebody has to own it for the purposes of maintaining it, but it's a shared-use type of, of, of asset for the community.
And we're about to lose the park lots across the street.
Right.
Yeah, I was worried that these were going to go away, as, if we sold this, and we need them.
We would restrict it under any kind of sales condition, that, that they could only, that they would have to retain it forever as...
And our, our staff has monitored the use of these lots on busy nights at the theater, and they're very sparsely used currently. Last Saturday night, it was a virtual sell-out at the theater for the Chinese Spring Festival. I was out there, so I took the opportunity to drive these lots af, during the show, and there was one or two cars parked in those areas currently. However, the gravel lot that we're going to be losing was quite full. So in the future, we are looking at new signage to help direct people to the available parking, because once we lose that gravel lot, we anticipate other areas, so that might be something that we want to monitor in the future. Once on busy nights, those lots may become much more utilized.
And my only thought also, in addition to that, is if, if the occupancy level of our existing storefronts were really high, and we were looking to, for businesses were dying to get in there, then I'd be probably more interested, depending on what the neighbors next door are interested in doing. I don't know, more empty storefronts isn't attractive to me right now, but.
You know, also, again, I don't know if water tanks is there, but they come underground to, to, underground.
It's probably very expensive to build, but yeah.
But at least it keeps like the aesthetic goal down. There are high water tanks there.
Here?
There.
Yeah, there's the ridge. And, you know, it's the original lake ridge.
It's very bad soils out there.
Yep, so, yeah, we've, we've done a lot of construction out there, and there's some, interestingly enough, there's some really good areas, and then there's some areas that are scary.
Yeah, the Human Services Building has a massive sump pit that constantly is, I mean, it's a sump pit like you've never seen pumping out of there.
It's a six-inch pump.
Yeah, big for a sump pump. So the last two slides on this topic, this just depicts of the thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-three acres, what staff is recommending, that there's about six percent of that property that, that we're suggesting we actively market and try and generate some revenue for the township on, and the balance twelve-hundred-ninety-five acres, we hold on to that. Our next steps would be to draft a policy and procedure document on disposal of surplus property, and run that by the Board of Trustees for, first for some comments, and ultimately for approval. Secondly, we retain one or more real estate listing agents. Now, that's been done relatively informally over the past. We would like to, you know, go through perhaps a, a formal RFP process on that, and gets at least one, one firm on board to help us list these parcels actively. We continue to work on refining our database over the next six months, and then generate that, that list of, of surplus properties. So with that, Greg, myself, be happy to answer any, any questions that the board has.
We talked about the board, and your next steps. So I know, I, looking at some of these properties, they might not be available for parks, but if we're going to write an ordinance, would it be prudent to look at now, saying, okay, if we're looking at selling a surplus property, does it meet these attributes? And one of them being, could it be used as a park, which would, you know, lower the distance to walking for parks, or something like that? I mean, if we're going to write an ordinance, maybe that'd be one of the checklist items for the future.
Right. So we, we propose to write a policy and procedure, not an ordinance. But, yeah, and that policy and procedure can, you know, pretty much stay whatever, whatever we want, I guess, you know, so. A lot of, a lot of flexibility in that. The ordinance is a more difficult task, because now you, when you create, when you enact, create and enact an ordinance, to modify that ordinance anytime down the road becomes kind of a laborious task. It requires a couple of readings, it's a lot of work from staff. We would recommend in this case that it be a policy and a procedure, so.
Okay, so, but policies could include something like that?
We could, yeah.
And there's also two parcels that are in the hopper, that we have looked at casually a year ago on one of these pieces, and we plan to get out on another portion, that are possible green space park things that we might want to do in the future. We've got a gentleman we made an offer to for four or five acres, that he rejected the offer, now he's come back, made a counter, so we're thinking that through right now, and we'll bring that to the board, if it makes sense for staff.
Okay, that's good.
That's for, wait, for property we would be purchasing?
Yeah, buying, buying property, acquiring, for green space.
With that in mind, like we did on the one that we did sell last year, could we look at codifying somehow that least part, or maybe all the money goes towards our parks? Improving our parks or adding green space?
Codifying and ordinances scare the heck out of me.
Our policy.
Putting into a policy is, we can make recommendations, suggestions that way, because you guys are going to approve that policy when it's started, right? So you're going to have plenty of opportunity to look at it and tweak it.
I mean, if there was a reason like we did with the sewer, or whatever it was, on the ones along Morton-Taylor, where we needed to purchase some, we need some money for that, then that's fine, but, yeah, that would be of interest.
We are making Greg's day, and Tim's, the other departments are saying.
Support.
I know, I know. I said part or all.
All right. All right. So I get the next steps are laid out, are there any additional board comments, questions?
Just, Tim, parks require maintenance. Is there any figure that you, that you know of? What does it cost to maintain a park?
I defer to Greg.
That really depends on the level of, you know, the, the service level of the park. Is it a small pocket park? Would cost minimal for annual maintenance. A, a large park, like a heritage park, a high-use park, Victory Park, those sorts of things are going to be much higher, so it's really...
You have a separate line item in the budget for maintenance of parks?
Yes, we have, we have a Parks Department budget that has, yeah, we have a specific budget that's, I have a number in my head, but I'm not sure I want to say, do you, Wendy, do you happen to know the parks? I think it's one...
I don't, and I'm just going to keep passing the buck. We're in the middle of the audit. I don't know if Sarah's hap, happens to have it off the top of her head. I, I don't know, I could look it up and get it back to you.
If, if you wanted to, come on, come on in, and we'll go through it line by line, you and I, anytime you want. We could have coffee in the morning.
Could very well be wrong, but yes, we do have a specific parks budget, and then we have the maintenance line and those sorts of things.
For example, the only one that sticks out, the dog park, I think we budget every year about twenty thousand dollars, and that's just the dog park that has grass and a fence. So that's a very basic park.
My concern is, you know, if we buy or have more parks, cost involved to the taxpayers to maintain that, and I think that should be in the discussion, as to whether or not we go forward with more parks, less parks. What's the cost to the taxpayers to maintain that?
Yeah, and if I may, to piggyback on that, I know there's a, a cost associated with an active or developed park versus a passive park. A lot of, a lot of municipalities promote passive parks, which have undeveloped property. which have undeveloped property, and the costs to maintain those are substantially less, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So if we're voting, I vote for passive parks over active parks every day of the week. I like walking in the woods.
A little premature to vote, so let's get the, we'll get the policy drafted and back in front of you hopefully in the next several weeks-ish, ish. Okay, very good. Seeing no additional comments, we move on now to item, second item. Twenty eighteen recommended water and sewer rates. I'm sure that's why the public is here tonight, and I see Mr. Wright has joined us. Welcome, sir. Tim, you're going to lead us?
Yeah. So, so each year, Finance and Budget Department staff and Municipal Services Department staff work together to jointly come up with the information that's required to ultimately set the rates. And we've got just a few slides that we're going to run through with the board to show you what some of the numbers look like this year and then what staff's ultimate recommendation is to the board going forward in advance of next week's Water and Sewer Rates Forum. Near the end of that discussion too, we also want to talk a little bit about the capital equity charges. Those are the charges that we charge developers or any homeowner that's actually going to connect up to the water and sewer system and our most recent calculations on that. And then also talk just briefly about a burning question that has been out there for, for many years, and that is, what's the impact of having dual water meters in the community? So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Bob and he can kind of go through what, what we've done on the public works side.
All right, thanks, Tim. Got Brad here, Brad Lear here with us also. Brad was intergirl in developing the rates this year and last year. He's getting more involved with it. I just wanted to run through the rate setting process from our side real quick. As Tim mentioned, and it's mentioned in the report, we use a true cost of service methodology to develop these rates. Basically, in early January, about the first week, we sit down, we look at the calendar for the year, and we set up our thirty-one step process to develop these rates. It's a two-page long list. We go through it a few times, look at all the dates. We backtrack from April so we can assure that all the rates are calculated and everything's before the board, before the first meeting in April, because we need two readings to amend the ordinance. So once we get that developed, we, we calculate the previous year's consumption. So we go back and look at that. After that, we calculate the unfunded water that the community. Basically, we, we have different ways of looking at it. We know we use water to fight fires. We have water main breaks, but that's basically unfunded water for the community. So we calculated our, we calculate our loss every year relative to most communities. We are extremely low. I think this year's overall loss was about four percent. They say if you're an excellent system, you're operating under ten. So we're very good in comparison to GLWA's system. They're about twenty-eight percent.
Wow.
Right now, yeah. It's an old system, though. Our system does date back into the early sixties. It's about our earliest pipe.
I'm sure we pay for that in our rates. They're unfunded.
Absolutely, absolutely. They allocate those costs to all the member communities and wholesale customers. At the end of January, we actually received the final rates from GLWA, so we take those numbers. We equate them into numbers that we can use. And we take those values, we calculate our fixed charges. We give those fixed charges along with the other verified numbers that we look at. We look at the connection charges, the equity charges, the front footage fees, just to verify that they're still valid for this year, and we adjust them as necessary. After that, we do give everything to finance, and that's when they do their magic. They, they punch those numbers that we give them into the actual budgets of the township and develop the rates that we establish and propose for that following year.
All right, that's my cue. So once, this sheet right here, if you look at page, I don't know if you can read this. It's in your packet of information as well. A six, I believe it is. Yep, it's A six. Basically, this is the budget overall for the Water and Sewer Fund that the board had adopted. We, what we do is we start with the budget dollars and we try to determine from that how much cash we actually need to collect from the customers for the upcoming year. We take the budget, we, we look at items such as, look at historical budgets to actual, to see where might we have a little bit of extra in the budget, just for, just to be conservative, and adjust the budget down, saying we might not need as much cash. And there's some items that we need cash on that isn't budgeted for, such the principal on the long-term debt. So that's not an expense in the budget under accounting rules, but we certainly need the cash from the customers to actually pay that debt down. So we add items such as principal, we adjust the budget to be based on what we actually think we're going to need, and we subtract things out like depreciation expense. We don't actually need cash for depreciation expense, so we back that out, because that's a non-cash type item. And we also offset any revenue items that are not, like the equity revenue items, anything that is not, that we're setting the rates for. We back that off to determine what cash we actually need this year. I'm going to jump a little bit, and if you recall, we have a minimum cash balance, and we've talked about this in the past. We have, we set what kind of the minimum cash balances we should have and the targeted cash balances that we should have. The targeted cash balances that we should have at the end of the year is about nineteen million dollars. So it's kind of, so it's kind of little, this, this font, but it's, our actual cash balances before the audit's done is, was about twenty-two point two million dollars. So keep in mind, we know right now that we have an expansion that we are going to be required to do at Watuah. It's going to start later this year, probably finalize in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, probably by the time it's all wrapped up. It's a big project. So out of that twenty-two million, we're setting aside, because we already know we're higher than our targeted cash balance of nineteen million dollars. We're setting aside seven and a half million dollars for that project, because we know we need it. We're not, we don't need to issue debt for it. We're just going to pay the cash for it. That brings our cash balance down to about fourteen point seven million dollars. To get that cash balance back up to the nineteen million, we'd need to build the cash balance up by four point three million dollars to get back to the targeted. So of that cash, that twenty-two point two million, we're setting aside seven and a half for the Watuah project. And then we are requesting that we add that four point three million back to our cash balance to get us to our target. So when you go back to this sheet right here, you can see the very bottom line, the increase in cash reserves, the four point three million. So after we take into account what we need from the budget for cash, we need to collect the current year cash requirements to be thirty-four point five five million dollars.
Now, yes?
Sure.
So is this project one we've reviewed, talked about before in our Watuah meetings? Or this is the, no, this is not migration to Yucca. This is?
This is new infrastructural.
It is, it has to do with migrating to Yucca.
Oh, it does?
It has to do with that.
We've got projects, multi-year projects.
There's two different things. We have a multi, they have a ten-year capital plan for what their existing capital that they know that they're going to have to maintain. We're contributing four, three to four hundred thousand dollars a year into that, just, just so they're holding on to that. This is a project that we knew we were going to need by sending all of our sewage to Yucca for them to treat, but we knew the payback period was going to be about three years.
Okay, yeah, I just don't memorize the numbers, so I can't remember if that's what we had talked about before and, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like the, kind of the similar payback period as the water tower. It was, you know, it was a significant project, but it was going to pay itself off very quickly.
Okay.
So we knew that. So taking on to this fun spreadsheet, which those of you who don't like spreadsheets probably are going cross-eyed, but we love this page. If you go to the bottom of the Baxton area, the, the number on the left side, the thirty-four point five million, that's where that number comes into play. So we start here. We say we need to collect thirty-four, four point five million. Of that, we've got a fixed fee portion. We know we're, we need to collect twen- two point eight million dollars. We know where that's going to come, based on the residents that we have, based on the number of customers. And that means we need to collect about sixteen million dollars in water revenue and fifteen million dollars in sewer revenue. From there, we basically back into how much consumption do we think we're going to need? So we have a contract with GLWA that we're going to sell two point six billion gallons or two point six thousand million gallons. Two point six billion gallons of, of water this year, and that's what our contract is. If you look at our ten, or twenty-year history, we historically have been about two point eight billion. However, the last few years, we haven't sold that much. So we actually think the two point six is, is a good figure to use. So knowing that, going across the table, actually, the second column, the current amount, means the one, the rates that we currently have, our variable weight, rate for water is five dollars and ninety-six cents. And sewer is six dollars and eighty-seven cents. If you go across to the blue highlighted cells, we are asking the board or recommending that we increase the water revenue rate to six dollars and eleven cents and lower the sewer revenue to five dollars and eighty cents. So overall, if you look at the bottom right corner of that box, we're requesting the variable rates to decrease by seven point one seven percent. And that is factoring and adding, getting the cash balance back up to the four point three, excuse me, getting back up to the nineteen million and setting aside the seven and a half million dollars for the, for the Yucca expansion or to expansion for Yucca. I'm happy to answer. Any questions for that part of it?
That's wonderful news.
We've migrated a little bit from six point five.
Nope.
Three.
Nope, this is the variable rate. We're going to get to the.
The rest of the story.
The, the fixed rate's going to increase slightly based on, it's eighty cents, eighty cents a month, two dollars and forty cents a quarter. So in the end, if you, if you combine those two, and I don't want to steal Bob's thunder when he gets to the bill, but the bottom line is, overall, it's about a six point seven percent decrease or six and a half percent decrease for an average customer.
Yeah, so it does vary depending on the customer. Obviously, we ran, I don't know how many scenarios and different water bills. I'm sick of it, I know.
Sorry.
At least a hundred different iterations, I think, of different spreadsheets. But this summary table here shows the impact on different customer classes. When you put those rates into our billing process and calculate in the fixed rates, you can see some of the sample bills here. We have all the different ones. We always look at, like to look at the average residential customer. That represents most of our customers in the community. You can see a sample bill from, using the numbers from two thousand seventeen on top. And then the outcome, basically in two thousand eighteen, what their, the same usage would cost, or usage would cost them in two thousand eighteen with the proposed rates. So about a six point three five percent reduction to the average customer.
But it, if I looked at the previous slide, it looked like the largest reductions were for high usage.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the more water you use typically, the more of a reduction you'll see. Yeah, more sewer.
Is there, is there a reason why we are recommending an increase in the water rate and a, and a, or, and a decrease in the sewer? What is the philosophy behind that?
The primary reason behind that are two things. One of them, we're still, we divide up that adding cash balance back. We divide that evenly between the water and sewer. The second piece is the debt for the water tower piece. Last year, it, this did not impact what the rates we were charging the customers, because we're trying to collect thirty-four million dollars in total from the customers between the water and sewer. That was allocated to the sewer line item last year, so we corrected that to get it to the water. So it, it almost looked like we're increasing it more this year, but we're, we're allocating it to the appropriate line item this year. If you recall, when we issued the debt for the water tower, we refinanced the sewer piece, took it out of the sewer and charged it to water, but we, we did not make that change in this spreadsheet. We made that change in the spreadsheet this year.
Let's see, the other, the other benefit that, that we're really seeing this year was, because remember, we, we cautioned the board last year about anticipating too big of a rate decrease, because we were bringing the water storage system online, because we knew that there were these other expenses that have to go back into the equation side, on the expense side. So they, they tend to offset one another until you've got the debt paid off. But the bonus here really was the switch from sending all the sewage or thirty percent of our sewage to the Wayne County and GLWA system. That, that really produced the big cost savings in this equation that brought the overall rate down and brought the sewer down by about a dollar per thousand, thousand gallons.
And looking through, when we said we have this three-year payback period for the project at Watuah, because we already have the cash to set aside for that, we don't have to pass that cost along to the users of the system. We're able to immediately start recognizing the savings for, for sending the flow to Yucca.
Now, we haven't been on Yucca for, for the last twelve months, have we? It wasn't for the entire year.
July.
July, for, this is for the budget moving forward.
Understandable, okay.
So I, that kind of answered my question, which is what accounts for this? Because I remember that the water tower was going to take three to four years to recoup our investment in that. So you're saying that it's because we've, we're moving to Yucca, which is less expensive, but we have not paid for these change, the seven point five million dollars and changes yet? Or we are kind of paying for it in this, but it's?
Well, technically, technically, we already have the cash set aside for that now, so we don't have to raise our water rates to account for that.
Well, you had the cash set aside, but we still had to recoup four point three or whatever the number was to get back up to nineteen. So not all of it was, we still, and we won't have to recoup really anymore of that seven point five to stay at nineteen?
As long as we, you know, as long as we sell the two point six billion gallons of water that we're expecting to sell. So, so last year, part of the reason we have excess cash balance is because we sold more than we had conservatively budgeted to sell, so that adds to the cash balance. But, you know, we have to make sure we are recouping our costs. So, you know, we've historically been a little conservative. I think last year we budgeted two point five billion gallons.
A little over two point five.
And.
Sold almost two point eight.
Yeah, so that, that accounts for why we had extra cash to be able to utilize some of that to set aside.
Can you show where the nineteen is that you're talking about? Because you were saying that. I was trying to find on the, I think.
The nineteen million? You know, I don't know if that's included in the packet, the nineteen million cash reserve calculation. It's not. I have a copy of it here. I can email it to you and I have a copy of it here if you'd like to take a look at it.
Thank you.
But it's, you know, we had a policy, a cash reserve policy that we had shown the board a year ago. And it, and it's following the same format that the consultant that we had hired years ago had recommended. This is the policy that we have, but the, the actual Excel spreadsheet that shows where that calculation is, is not. So I can get that to you before you, or I can show it to you tonight.
Go ahead, Michael.
Uh, the, I don't know if this is for Mr. Belair or for Mr. Fosson, but the question I have is, do we notice a correlation between rates and usage? I kind of instinctively assume the higher the rate, the lower the usage on an individual basis, but I imagine there's, have, have we ever noticed any, any correlation?
I don't think there's a big correlation.
Are you talking about on a, a high user of our resi- of our residents?
Correct.
That would be because of your variable rate, you're taking on more of the savings from the variable rate change. Less of your bills based on the fixed rate.
I'm sorry?
It's take, the, the mathematical equation that they're showing is based on the total bill. So the more of your bill that's based on a fixed rate, your rate's going to vary versus the variable rate. So the, so the reduction, the seven and a half or seven point one seven percent reduction on the variable rate will weigh higher than the increase in the fixed rate for those, for those higher users. Just, just based on the math. That's, that's based on the algebraic equation.
Sure. Nine, nine years prior experience, and Steve saw this too, is we'd use less water, rates would go up. We use more water, rates would go up. It's like, come on. That's when we're on the Detroit system. I'm hoping there may be more stability in rates in the future, perhaps with Great Lakes Water Authority. We shall see.
Oh, I meant as a, as a matter of do consumers, do the individuals, so does our overall water sold track with the rate? Is there like an inverse ratio where if the rate goes up, do we sell typically less water?
I don't think so. I think the, the largest driver of the volume of water that we sell. I don't think so. I think the, the largest driver of the volume of water that we sell on a given year is the weather.
The weather.
Yeah, because there's such a large percentage of our volume comes from outdoor irrigation, outdoor uses.
Okay.
Yeah, and last year, I was gonna say, last year, we had a very dry summer, and so that's why we probably used more than what we had planned.
It probably doesn't help too that bills track after usage, so it's kind of like, oh darn. I used all that water, and now I've gotta pay four months later.
I think when we raised them a lot in the past, that it has given notice, but then unfortunately, it becomes a new norm at a level, so if.
Short-term impact.
Yeah, so, so since we're keeping them flat or even now with the sewer lowering, which is good news, hopefully, uh, people will start using it again. But, uh, but yeah, there's some impact. I remember there were a couple of years where we had to raise it a lot. And, yeah, people were talking about not watering every day and things like that.
Right. For comparison's sake, and I forget exactly which year it was, but I think it was seven, um, two thousand seven, we sold three point five billion gallons of water. And now with the growth that has occurred since two thousand and seven, appreciating that, our consumption is down to two point six billion.
Yeah.
That's a trend that you're seeing, uh, not, not only in, in southeast Michigan, that's a trend nationwide.
People are using less water now.
Yeah, like a third in terms of quantity, volume. It's a lot.
We've got appliances now being sold that are more efficient.
Tim, what are the factors that, that have contributed to this rate that we have now that seems to, the percent seems to be lower, six percent lower? What, what, the, the water tank, sending the, the sewers to Ypsilanti, is there other factors that have helped?
Strong financial management.
Excellent board decision.
Next.
Yeah, I mean, that was.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, no, I asked, I asked him, I said, I remember when we first started talking about the water tower and Dr. Taj, this is before Steve, was, we were, we were targeting, tracking about three million dollars. That stuck in my small, it was up there in the drawer, shelf drawer someplace up my brain. We're hitting it. It looks like we're gonna, we're approaching it.
Really, I asked, you know, I've sat through several of these. I don't remember seeing this rate reduction.
This is good news, John. This is good news. This is happy time.
For the first time.
Yes.
Even though we've seen increases, now we're looking at a decrease, and I'm just wondering what.
If I go back to what I, what I said before is, you know, on its own, if we would've just done the water storage and not changed from sending our, our wastewater to the, the county and GLWA system, you probably would be seeing a rate increase. The fact that two of those hit in the same year was really kind of almost a perfect scenario, coupled with the fact that we sold more than we expected to last year, water-wise, built up some of that cash so that we have the cash to pay for the Watuah improvements going forward. It's, you know, good, good, and good.
In past years, when we've kept it flat, it's by using cash, right? And we aren't doing that this time. I mean, the seven point five million and the replenishing there, but we're not using any other cash.
And the fact, if we replenished it now in a year where, you know, we had, we're having good results, we're still reducing the rate. If something comes down the pike in a year from now and the rates significantly increase, we still have that flexibility to soften a rate and increase in the future by getting it to that target balance now.
Right.
Tim, is this a trend here, or is it just a one, one-time?
Well, I think it's been mentioned already. We're hoping that, that this flattens out. That's our overall goal. I think we might see some future reductions or at least keep it at zero. That's the whole goal of this. And the other good, good sheet to look at in this rate study that you have, it's sheet A two. If you look at the rates since nineteen seventy-four, this is the largest decrease that we've recorded. So that is a good thing.
When will we, we see the full impact of the water tower?
Pay off the debt three years.
We're seeing it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we actually renegotiated our contract with GLWA, uh, last fall in November. So that resulted in a substantially lower water cost to the township, so we're already seeing it.
Okay.
So.
And we're paying that debt off over seven years, so once that's off in seven years, then we don't anticipate any very large expenditure.
Part of it, we bonded, and then part of it, we paid for out of the water.
We spent a ten million dollar project in total, so we bonded seven and a half million and paid cash for the difference.
And once that debt is serviced, then there'd be an opportunity for, make decisions on those cash flows that we're using. Seven years-ish.
I can't imagine in nineteen, nineteen seventy-nine, a fifty-two point five percent increase. Holy cow.
And yet, it was only a dollar eighty-three back then, so.
It's all relative.
It's now ten times that or eight times that, so.
Wow.
Thank you, guys.
So we have two, two other quick things just to share with you. One is the, uh, the separate memo that, that we handed out on the capital equity charges. I also want to apologize. I, when I asked, uh, to, to print the attachment out, um, I, there was a misfire on our end. I had asked Christie just to print one of these pages, not all eleven or twelve that you've got here, all this technical detail. Unless you're really interested in it and wanna talk to Wendy, you're welcome to.
I didn't wanna talk to Wendy.
This is great, this is great talking material.
Yeah, I'd really only intended to have you look at the, the very, sorry.
Back of the first page.
Yeah, back of the first page. And it, uh, it has a, uh.
Yellow highlighted.
Yeah, two sets of, uh, two sets of line items, and then there's a hundred and fifty shown at the bottom of it.
So each year, uh, we readdress what the equity char- or the connection charges should be. So these are people who have not been in the, um, system yet, new homes, um, connecting into our system. And our current system, all of the residents have already paid into. So it's almost like other people are buying their equity into the system that the other residents have already been paying to upkeep. So what we do is we basically say, here's what the net, the equity is. Here's all the assets, less the accumulated depreciation in the system, divided by how many, um, meters that we currently have, and says, this is how much it costs per resident to get into our, um, current system. With the, um, updates and the work that we've had done in our system, um, this year, I think last year, it changed by like nine dollars. So we said, we don't, we're not gonna deal with updating the ordinance for a nine-dollar update. But this year, um, it's about a hundred and fifty dollars difference when you add the, uh, water utility and the wastewater connection fees together. So we are recommending at this point in time to, uh, when we bring the ordinance amendments, we are recommending to also increase the connection charges. And again, this is for the new, new developers, new people coming into our system.
When was the last time they changed, uh?
We, we updated it two years ago.
Okay.
And, and we decided at that point in time, um, we'd start looking at it annually just to make sure, especially knowing we were gonna be building a water tower, and we know we're gonna have the, uh, Watuah, um, expansion as well. So next year, we might be bringing forth another one, just knowing that there's probably gonna be a significant, um, increase in the system again.
And then the, uh.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Is that competitive, like with other communities, you know?
It is competitive. Yeah.
Our rates are, last time we checked, our, you know, our rates are a little bit lower than Northville Township. I think they were a little bit higher than Plymouth Township, but, um, it varies. Again, everybody's got, every community has a different amount of equity in the system, depending on the assets that they, that they've built over time. So we have a, I think, a really solid, defendable way to, to compute those calculations. And, uh, and that's gonna, gonna definitely help us going forward. The, uh, last item that we just wanted to briefly talk about was the, um, ever, the ever-recurring question on, uh, can we have a second water meter? And I know we've talked with the board in the past about some of the pros and cons of that. The, you know, on the, definitely on the con side, uh, it means, you know, the, the resident has to hire somebody to put that second meter in. There's permitting costs, construction costs associated with that. And then longer term, there's cost for us to replace that meter, uh, when that meter eventually fails, you know, fifteen, twenty years down the road. There's cost for us to, uh, put a reading unit on that meter. That's another, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars. And there's cost for us to read that meter, whether it's once a month, once every two months, or once every three months. So those are kind of some of the, the, the negative sides of having a second meter. The, the positive sides are really kind of all on the, the, the user or the customer side, and that is, well, maybe they could get a break on, on the sewage costs by not having to pay for, uh, water that otherwise maybe isn't getting into the sewer system. So we did, pardon me, we did a fairly comprehensive analysis. And, uh, what Bob's handed out is just a summary showing, uh, a bunch of different customers and how much their bills would go up or go down based on, pardon me, four quarters of usage. The first quarter kind of being like the January to March, uh, and then April through June, et cetera, you know, during the year. And then the far right-hand column is what's the overall average impact by having a, a second meter on the home in terms of what it would do to our rates? Like, I'm getting Greg's voice. So, uh, as you can see, there are, um, few customers that are going to benefit when looking at it on the average over the, the twelve months or the four quarters. The people that are going to be negatively affected, if you look at that top row, uh, the low residential user, that would be, uh, probably somebody on a smaller lot that doesn't have an irrigation system. They're going to see about a six-plus percent increase by letting others have, uh, a second meter on their home.
That's probably over half the homes.
Yeah, and that's a, definitely a majority of the homes.
East, east side of town.
And a majority of the homes in the older, uh, parts of the community. Then an individual that has, um, their, an average amount of usage, but has an irrigation meter, would probably see about a four percent decrease, uh, throughout the year in their rates by having that second meter. This doesn't factor in those other costs that I, that I talked about initially, um, for the township to read that meter, maintain that meter going forward. But they would see about a four percent, uh, decrease in their costs potentially during the year. The, uh, the families and the high residential uses in the same, same range of potential savings, uh, over the duration of the year. The average user that doesn't have irrigation, they're gonna be just like the, the low residential user. They're gonna see about a six percent rate increase. But the customers that are really gonna benefit by having a second meter are those customers with big irrigation accounts like the, um, like the, uh, Downtown Development Authority would have a, about a fifty-one percent decrease in, in their costs if we allowed a second meter for, for their usage. So this kinda puts into perspective what it does to different types of customers if we allowed the second meter as a matter of, of policy or practice. It also makes a whole lot of assumptions, which was difficult in doing the analysis, because we have to make, we have eleven thousand.
Three hundred and eleven.
Three hundred and eleven homes in the community that have irrigation systems. Not everybody's gonna put a second meter in, but we have to make some assumptions. So we make the assumptions that everybody, you know, does it. And then what would the impacts be if everybody did it? So, um, so we had to, we had to run, uh, a bunch of different, uh, analyses this year to kind of come up with this comparison for you. But it at least gives you a picture of, uh, if we did allow this as a matter of practice, what it would do to, uh, various customers. Those who have an irrigation system would see a small benefit, as you can see, uh, during the year. There's two quarters where they would pay less and two quarters where they would pay more. The, the balance of the customers, you know, are going to see a, a rate increase in all four quarters of the year, those that don't have irrigation systems.
Because if you kinda, if you think about what I just talked about with the cash needs of the community, the bottom line is, we're still gonna need thirty-four million dollars at the end of the year, at the end of the day. So it's just gonna be spread between the customers differently.
You're gonna need more, because you're gonna have additional costs in some areas.
You are gonna have a little bit more. That's true.
Do you have any idea what the, what, what, what would happen to the fixed rate if we had to read a second meter on eleven thousand homes?
The, the fixed would go up.
Outside of?
This, this computes fixed and variable.
So you are including?
I, I don't think in the analysis, we assume that the fixed would bump up.
This is just the variable rate impact.
'Cause initially, initially, the homeowner's gonna pay for that first meter. Then we're looking to pay for the replacement of that meter down the road, just like we do with new construction. When a new building comes in, the homeowner, either directly or through the builder, buys that meter as part of, uh, part of their charges. But when it comes time to replace that meter, the meter's ours, um, and we pay for the actual replacement of that meter when it fails.
Just as a quick example, I ran this scenario through my water bills. Last year, it saved me thirty-eight bucks. I don't know what the return on investment would be at, 'cause I'd have to put the meter in, pay for the permits, pay for the plumbing through a contractor.
And that's what, like more than a thousand bucks?
At least a thousand.
So you can calculate over a twenty-five-year payback.
But then you're, you're one of the low-use residential's then, right?
Between low and average.
Okay, I mean, so you're, obviously, I, you're gonna probably talk about this next week then, right, at the rate? Could you maybe write up some steps and assumptions you made? But as a question to that, what would a more realistic scenario be that we, that the low-use residential's wouldn't put in a meter? You still have to come up with thirty-four million, but, I mean, wouldn't that make it not as big of an increase for those people? And another thing is, so they've got the second meter. It doesn't absolve them of all sewer costs, correct? Just ones that they water their lawn with or the back forty or whatever, right? They would still have to pay sewer costs on what they would use in their homes, right?
Right, and the low-use, the low-use customers would not put in a second meter? Only, only the people that wanted a second meter would put it in.
Right, so wouldn't that, I mean, that, so we wouldn't have these numbers. It'd be a little bit different then, correct? If only the high-use people who wanted a second meter put it in. I mean.
That's what we've assumed.
That, that, all these rates assume that the high residential people put in a meter and the low, the low use do not. So that's how it would impact everybody.
We've gotta pay for the decrease in their bill.
And so you're saying a ballpark figure's around a thousand dollars for a resident to put?
That's low.
Low, is it? Okay.
That's if the pipes are exposed. You have a finished basement. Who knows? It'd be a lot more.
So, okay.
I understand this, um, but the one question I have is, it would be good to see, uh, like you did for the water bill increase, like a real comparison on two different water bills, the same house, high-use household. One thing, I'm.
How much do you want? I have them all.
I, I meant for your, I meant for your, uh, hearing, for the public to see. I don't, I don't need to see it. But, um, but I'm not, the one thing I'm not sure about in these numbers is it seems like it doesn't account for the fact that quarter two and quarter three's usage is much higher than quarter one and quarter four. 'Cause it's almost like the left, the rightmost column is just an average of these numbers. And I would think it would probably be more towards like for the high-use residential, if they're in quarter two and quarter three seeing fifteen percent, that, it would be at least ten percent overall savings for them. So that's why for that one, maybe I'd like to see the comparison of all four water bills, or the public should. But, um, even if that's the case, and they're spending a thousand dollars on water, which, or fourteen hundred, that's still only a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five dollars of savings. And you have to invest a thousand dollars to get that hundred and twenty-five dollars of savings every year.
Yeah, it's funny. We, we debated the very thing that you're, you're talking about. But what we could do is, like, whether we should go with percentages or numbers in this table, we can generate a similar table with what the numbers are. So what's the bill?
For someone like me who orders his lawn, I mean, and I'm probably between average and high use, that I know my bills are much higher in those two quarters.
Well, you give us your address, and we can run your scenario.
Do it. Do it, and then, uh, I'll make the decision.
I think do, we could do that, is take the, the trustees and don't, you know, put names on them, but you run it, and I think what you're gonna find is.
I can run.
Tim and I, I mean, we, we've talked about this over and over and over, but the, what you're doing is by putting in the second meter, those who can best afford are gonna get a great reduction.
Yeah.
And those who can least afford it are gonna get hammered.
Yeah.
That's what this does.
Yeah.
Would it be legal to have two water rates and just increase the water rate for the second meter six point three eight percent?
Yes. The cost of water is the cost of water.
No matter what you're using it for? I, my comments, I didn't say I was for doing this. I just, for the analysis purposes. I, my comments, I didn't say I was for doing this, I just, for the analysis purposes.
Maybe the word story behind.
And I would think that'd be an assumption that the high use with irrigation does put a second meter in, because some people may not, and so that would be another issue, because...
Yeah, I was, honestly, I was driving Bob and Brad crazy with running different scenarios. Those are my words, that's, I'm sure that's not what they were saying, but I kept saying, hey, can you run this, too? But, but, yeah, we, so we ran a bunch of different scenarios, and we kind of had to get to a point where, all right, we're just, we have to make this set of assumptions, because we could run, you know, 15 scenarios within each scenario.
Right.
Yeah, just write up the assumptions, so you could just hand it to someone that could understand it.
I have them.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah. But in all the spreadsheets, we have our five or six assumptions.
Well, thank you. I know this was a lot of work, too.
Yeah, so, kind of bottom line, I think we're, kind of collectively, where we're coming from, we don't think it's a good recommendation. We would recommend to stay with what, what we're currently doing.
True cost of service.
Because I guess, I know you said that typically, weather is the number-one driver of usage, but I can only imagine if we do reduce the cost of irrigation substantially, that that would increase the likelihood that people would in fact irrigate. That's just my gut-level assumption of economics in general. If the cost of something decreases, but the need's there, you would, you would do it, you know, you would. And I know that the overall rate is, you know, the overall usage impacts the overall rate in general. So not only could a potential non-irrigating resident see a 6.38% increase, they could potentially see an increase in the overall water rate as a result, that the township's usage could go up, because the cost to irrigate would substantially be lower. So there could be, in a sense, two, kind of, one overt rate increase, but there could essentially be two rate increases, and that's just more of a statement.
I think if, you know, if we were proposing a really substantial decrease, you could, you know, maybe see something like that. The reality is, 6%, well, it's sizable, you know, what it means on that sample bill that we gave you, kind of, you know, it's, it's not a lot on a quarterly or annual basis.
Okay.
It's going in the right direction, which, again, it's rare to have a decrease. We're very fortunate that we're in that situation this year. Some good news.
I'm probably going to get grief from every other public or director.
Good, good.
We meet frequently.
And our largest public forum that we ever had was when we didn't raise them. So, this one should be astronomical.
Well, thank you very much. Good job. That's such good news.
That being said, no further comments, questions? Now call for public comment. Is there any public comments? Yes, please. If you would, could you ask you to, well, because we're sitting down, maybe sit down at one of the mics, or at the podium, either way. And then what we're going to ask you is, name, address, if you would be so kind.
Is it Ellen? Oh, it's Ellen.
Please limit to three minutes.
Elizabeth, oh, it's fine. Elizabeth Cumby, 6640 Rain Tree Drive, 10. I just do want to ask about the, you were talking about the equity charges? You said $150, is that for both water and sewer, or each category?
In total, it is $150 increased.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
No other public comment? Is there any board comments?
It's always good to be lowering rates.
Good. Okay, Anne Marie, you have a comment?
John's taking a call just now. Wait, it's interesting, you guys said you didn't want to print out all the other pages, but since you did...
Oh, no.
Actually, so you had a lot of stores, so every time a new development comes in or something, you have the purchase, the water line, basically donations, as you call them, or contributed, is just basically from their facility out to the public? Is that what that means?
Yeah, it does. And basically, the capital charges, you're looking at the memo that was attached to it. If you look at the first page that we directed you to, you can see, you know, it starts with the total assets in the system, you subtract that depreciation, and then you also subtract out the estimated contributions. So we are not charging residents for equity for donated lines into the system, because those were donated. Our current residents did not pay for those lines. So we do track them, because for auto purposes, we are required to record those on our books, but we are not charging residents to tap in for lines that we got for free.
And the same for the sewer drains, too.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thanks.[1768.83]